To call our Commission Leader to the floor. I pledge a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Beulah?
Here.
Commissioner Day?
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt?
She's out. She's on her way.
I never heard her. Commissioner Ruth?
Here.
Commissioner Robertson?
Here.
Commissioner Speka?
Here.
Commissioner Terry?
Here she comes.
Here she comes.
Commissioner Diana? Okay.
She's here.
She's here!
All right, um, the minutes for March, let's see, actually, the date was April.
No, it's actually, yeah, sorry.
Will be, um, looked at, minutes will be turned in to look at in our next Commission meeting.
Do you have any edits you want included in this first set? Pass them down. I do. The main part of concern was the item number one. Yes, that's it. So we would take any recommendations from this. I'd like to get those a little bit better because they are. It is important.
So our next packet will have two minutes, two sets of minutes to review. Okay, great. Awesome. Um, I will now turn the time over to Nikki Bremin for courtesy.
The City Commission would like to express their gratitude to Nancy Sackett for many years of service, hard work and dedication to the patrons of the Lewestown Library and the citizens of Lewestown. And I would like to read, um, a little bit about Nancy. She enjoyed her last sunset on Sunday, April 13th, at her home in Lewestown, surrounded by friends and family. She was born at St. Joseph Hospital in Lewestown on March 8th, 1957, to John Wallace Sackett Sr. and Lucy Rose Skang Sackett. Nancy was raised on the farm at Moxon by her parents and two older brothers, Johnny and Jimmy. Her early years at Moxon shaped her life as she felt she grew up in God's country with strong memories that resonated throughout her life. She attended school in Moxon through eighth grade, or excuse me, fourth grade. Then, after the school closed, went to Stanford where she graduated in 1975. After high school, Nancy went to Montana Tech University in Butte for a year, then transferred to Montana State University in Bozeman, where she graduated with a degree in Business Finance. One summer while in college, Nancy volunteered at the Lewestown Public Library, and this was the beginning of an era. Nancy was hired as a library aide in 1985. She went on to be in the library world for the next forty years and was able to continue to work until a few weeks before she passed. Nancy started the successful senior outreach program in 1999. She took library materials to the assisted living homes in the area, as well as senior facilities and homebound library patrons. Nancy excelled as a fiction library. She knew what the community loved to read. Nancy also managed in her library alone for the library that was not an item she could not find or get for someone. Nancy made sure that people had access to books no matter where they were. She knew how much, how much stories meant to everyone, and Nancy was a true share of stories. Nancy was a fan of the underdog and supported him all walks of life. She was able to talk to anyone and enjoy talking to people one-on-one about their history and their lives. And we will get this to the library to have them put up in the library.
Okay, um, no proclamations, so we'll go ahead and go on to board our Commission reports. We'll start going with Commissioner Hewitt. Any?
Um, no. I just have a blessing, a Montana blessing. I don't know if any of you saw it before. I can either wait and do it.
You can do it now.
I can do it now. Okay. Can you hear me? This is a Montana blessing. May your visions be as boundless as our skies. May your soul have the strength of our mountains. May your life be as peaceful as our gentle falling snow. May your days be as numbered as the trees in our forests. And there's no other. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Nothing at this time. However, I guess I will stay true to schedule. Next Monday, we'll have a City-County Health Corps meeting next Monday.
And we got our agenda today, so.
They what?
We got our agenda today, so.
Okay, I haven't seen that yet.
Late this afternoon.
Okay.
And then as far as the park and recreation, where I was not able to attend that meeting this month, but I believe progress has been made on that floor?
Yep, we snuck a peek and saw, uh, probably twenty-five percent of the subfloor was already installed when we peeked. So, uh, the removal of the old floor went very quickly. Um, they're now in the process of putting it back. Um, and then all we kind of focused on is our capital improvements list.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to report, the snow removal committee meeting has been, next one's been set for May 22nd at 10:00 a.m. at the City Office.
May 22?
May 22, 10:00 a.m., City Office. Let's hope we don't have snow.
Are you still going to have participation?
Yes, yes, that's public meeting with participation, yes.
Okay.
Uh, the library, can you guys hear me? Do I need to speak into this? The library board met April 17th. Um, we had a very good meeting. We talked a lot about Nancy Sackett and her legacy at the library. Again, she passed away on April 13th, a little over a week ago. Uh, and again, she began her career in 1985, which makes forty years of dedication to the library. That's something that we want to honor and make sure that we notice. Uh, Nancy was a constant at the library and offered that warm welcome to all of our many patrons throughout the years. And we appreciate and acknowledge her service to the Central Montana community. Additionally, I'd like to say that the library staff worked very hard. Uh, the Tuesday after Nancy passed was very shocking to many members of our community, and they were there to offer other support and respect and were very, uh, kind and caring to a lot of the members that took that pretty hard. So they have done a very good job and represented the city very well. Additionally, we are still kind of shuffling with the memorandum of understanding with the city, and that should be done here pretty soon. And, uh, we had some discussion about how we are going to address our staff shortage coming in the summer, with summertime being a very busy time. Um, we have moved our, uh, this is where all these notes come in. Uh, we have moved our May meeting to Tuesday, May 20th, to accommodate the board. We have some scheduling issues. That will be at 1:00 p.m. at the library. And at that time, that is all that I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Speka?
Yes, the Slant Development Board met on April 17th. A couple things of note, not too much with the actual board itself, just kind of typical business. Uh, but we did talk some about the changes to, um, tech, and tech probably too, that would impact us, and so I'm sure Holly maybe, or, um, Sarah would be happy to come to tell us about how that's going to affect things. There was some in him, you know, a lot. Um, also Russ Butcher is on that board and mentioned that the county was having some maybe concerns with our, the, uh, planning commission proposal.
Not anymore.
Not anymore? Okay, good.
I think we're resolved. I was told today.
Perfect, wonderful, great. And, uh, then they were talking about trying to get some money released, um, from the USDA. It's been approved, we released, but not being spent. And they're trying to use it to help with the Real Development, Real Business Development Center. So reaching out to Senator Sheehy and others to try to get some money released that can make a difference in this community. It's kind of the highlights of the meeting.
Thank you. Okay, um, City Manager reports. City Manager, Hallie Phelps.
Yep, um, the work at the Central Coast, uh, which is cleanup work, has resumed right now. They have just about completed the environmental, um, analysis or assessment, the EA. Um, and that will go through review, which is, uh, probably about a thirty-day turnaround. Um, we currently have two grants with DNRC, uh, for both the formulation of the EA and eventual capping or the rest of the cleanup work. Uh, those grants were, uh, set to expire later this year, and so, uh, we did have to switch environmental consultants last year due to just general staffing and, uh, workflows. Our previous consultant wasn't able to meet our timelines. And so, uh, for about the last six months, we've been working with Tri-Hydro and, um, are working hard on completion of the EA and pretty optimistic that, uh, we can start the actual cleanup or finalize the cleanup up there in the next couple of years. And so, uh, right now, we've put an extension request for both of those grants. Um, the EA one is through this year, and then the second one is the cleanup portion of the grant. And, uh, we are optimistic that we can have all of this work done by September 27th. So for next year. Um, for Columbus, we did finalize our buy-sell on the property earlier this year. Right now, we're working with the developer and his team on the development agreement, and they're also looking at, uh, if the SID for the property is feasible. So more to come on that as we continue those negotiations. Um, we've had very good luck filling our seasonal positions. Uh, we are still looking for applicants to lifeguard at our pool this summer. And so if you know kids or anyone that might be interested in that type of position, um, I believe this certain wage for the position with no experience is fifteen dollars sometimes. So, uh, pretty competitive wages, um, for youngsters. Um, and we do anticipate that the pool will be open the first week of June. Of course, we have to work hard to get kids trained in advance for that as well. Uh, this year's historic resource annual award will be held next eight. Uh, this year it'll be at the Mob Gallery at 6:00 p.m. Uh, there's two awards, and you'll post the poster, you'll know who those are. Um, but we will also have entertainment provided by Philip Page. Uh, he is from Dillon, a cowboy singer and storyteller, so we're excited to offer this free event to our community. Uh, the Downtown Association is working on their first, uh, kind of coordinated cleanup of the year. Uh, they're working with property owners in the city and the state uh, to get sidewalks swept ahead of the street sweepers. And so, uh, we'll be working on, on that this week. And then, uh, I'm also working on finalizing MOUs for the parklets, uh, downtown banners, and Main Street trees. And then, just a little note, tomorrow's Earth Day. And for Earth Day, Recycle Montana is holding their event that collects e-waste and paper, um, at the playgrounds this year. It's a wonderful event. They always love to see how many pounds of, of garbage they kept out of the landfills. And so, and if you have that stuff lying around, I encourage you to take it out there. If you want to see what they're accepting, uh, check out Facebook for more details. And then, uh, David Tetchdrumit as well. We have received the first draft of the MOU. Uh, Tyler and I are working on reviewing it and getting back our comments. Uh, but if you'd like, we'll have it turned around pretty quickly. Lynam, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the LDA, the Lewestown Downtown Association. They did receive, um, communication today that this Thursday morning, the streets will be, Main Street will be swept by the state. And so they're asking all the downtown businesses to sweep everything into the streets that night. And I believe, did they give you permission, they're heading?
Yep.
Putting signs out for no capping so that?
They're noticing that, and we're also going to clean the side street with the same.
Oh, nice, okay. Perfect, thank you. Okay, um, we'll move on to public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Can you please stand and state your name?
Yes, my name is Brandon Barryard. I live here in Lewestown. Um, I wanted to bring up one issue that I, that came to mind when I was at the jail. Um, I was invited to visit the jail last summer, and, uh, when I got out, I decided to put some money on some inmates' books that were in the jail. And, um, an issue came up where I was made aware by one of the inmates that he never got the money that I had put on his books. And I never got, you know, I was thinking, how do you solve an issue like that? If, if there, I don't know that there is something that wrong. I'm not blaming anybody, but it'd be nice if maybe, um, I could get a receipt signed by the inmate that he received the funds, like say if I put money back on his books. Somehow, you know, maybe just say, here, would you sign this receipt? You receive the thing, get the copy, and then maybe a third copy could be given to the person who put this money on the guy's books. One way to solve this, uh, lack of trust. And I don't know if there's anything like that that happens or already, or?
So, uh, Mr. Barryard, how about City Attorney? Uh, County is actually the agency that handles the jail. So the jail, the jail's actually a county-owned facility.
Okay.
So, uh, if, so the County Commissioner meeting might be more appropriate? Yep.
Okay. I wanted to make mention to the, um, my condolences, by the way, to your loss at the trial.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, um, the, the man was charged with reckless driving, intimidation, and hurt family members. So he was found only guilty of the reckless driving aspect, so, um, but good try. Uh, I want to turn, um, my case, last June, I was charged with two felonies, sex trafficking, solicitation of prostitution. I was given a fifty thousand dollar bond. I was arrested. Officer Elliott is the officer who charged me with sex trafficking. Mr. West offered me a plea bargain of anger management. He said, I'll drop it from sex trafficking and solicitation of prostitution if you'll plead guilty to privacy and communications, um, and do forty hours of anger management. And my response was, no way, Jose. I lost five thousand dollars to Central Montana bail bonds. What I'm asking is maybe someone here could think about how there might, it doesn't seem fair. You know, if I go, if I go to jury trial with the public, with the state's public defender, and I beat the charges, you know, um, there just seems to be, there's something going on here. And Mr. West made a statement at closing arguments that Mr. Barryard went too far this time, which implies to me he's going back in time and maliciously charging me with things unrelated to this current case. And I wanted, and I wanted to bring that up, and I want everybody to know it. And I don't think this man right here should be highly esteemed in our community. Not with how I've been treated and how I see him treating other people in our community. I would like to know if there's a way to keep track of his win-loss record at his jury trials.
Uh, Brandon, you've got to remember that we have a operation of powers, and so the Commission does not, uh, regulate what charges are filed, the court system at all, so.
Thank you for your comment. We're going to move on to your?
Sir, you tried to put me in prison.
Point of order?
You tried to put me in prison. And the jury said not guilty on two counts, and it only took them an hour to deliberate.
We're going to be moving on now to consent agenda?
The process is, is the punishment, is it not, Mr. West? That's not correct, sir.
Okay, we're going to be moving on to the consent agenda. Um, acknowledgement of claims that have been paid from April 1st to April 17th. Does anyone have any questions for the financial board?
I do. Um, the very first, um, group of?
Sure.
Yeah, the very first, first ones.
Page one?
Yeah, page one. Who, who or what are the items for?
The libraries? I can answer that one. Yeah, it says, in the PO, it says LID. It's all for the library. Do you see it?
Nope, that's not it.
Just after the amount.
Oh, there. Oh, 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 okay, got it, yes. I, uh, sorry.
No, it's fine.
Not a problem.
All righty, thank you.
Any other inquiries?
Page five. I'm still kind of a new person here, so can you talk about the Lewestown Tree Service and, um, select which to cut, what not to cut?
Yep, um, so this one I did inquire, uh, to public works about. It was a hazardous branch that was left, um, after the winter snow. Um, it was too high and deemed a hazard on a public tree, which we located in the public right-of-way. And so, uh, we did ask Lewestown Tree Service to remove that. Um, we're in the process of soliciting bids and figuring out in the future if we're going to do it on a rotation or, um, what we can do to make it fair and economical. But those are hazardous trees.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve it, you said, or?
Sorry, guy.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Robertson and a second by Commissioner Ruth. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, awesome, the consent agenda is approved. All right, moving on to our regular agenda. Item number one, discussion in action on approving sharing the cost of the bridge located at Third Avenue South in Bed Street. City Manager, Hallie Phelps.
Yep, um, so included in your packet was a couple of things on this item. Uh, first, an email with, um, one of the engineering county uses at Stanley Engineering that had cost estimates for replacing the bridge located at Third and Bed Street. And, um, the difference is the two costs, twenty-four feet is the standard county bridge in kind of their standard. Uh, the bridge that's currently there is a thirty-foot wide bridge. And so, uh, the city has asked them to, uh, replace it with a like bridge or a bridge of the same width. Um, and so you can see that cost difference, um, is just over twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, also included in your packets is an MOU. We've been working with the county for many years on getting an MOU in place. Um, that would more specifically address the cost-sharing of cost. Um, and then there is some state statute that says even in municipalities, the counties are responsible to maintain bridges. Um, some of the language in the MOU, such as road surfacing and, uh, some of the gravel is required, that, you know, municipalities cover a portion of the back costs. But, um, that's really otherwise would be in the county's, uh, responsibility. And so, uh, in order to facilitate this bridge replacement, um, it's been on the books for probably the last year. Look, uh, we first had our meetings on it, and, uh, there was a lot of discussion on what type of structure and working with DNRC and FWP on, uh, an acceptable structure. Um, and so I think it's important that we get the bridge selected and move forward with the replacements, because otherwise, uh, it'll be another summer without that bridge too. And so what I would like, uh, to propose or recommend tonight is going ahead with the cost-sharing on this. But I would like, uh, to see if you guys would, uh, consider making it contingent on getting a signed MOU in place.
Contingent on what?
Getting a signed MOU in place.
And is the cost sharing just at thirteen thousand, or is it like half?
Twenty-seven, six.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, twenty-seven, right.
And that is just the cost I did ask, because it included some language about excavation and things like that. But that is actually just the cost of the rep rap and the structure itself. So I didn't follow up and ask.
The way I read this memorandum of understanding, the city is responsible for the approach getting onto the bridge, the decking or paving of the bridge, and then getting off the bridge. The structure that holds it all up is county?
Yes, that's what state statute is.
All right. And they, the cost could be up to fifty percent for the city?
Um, what they're asking for at this point is just the cost difference there. Uh, this is a concrete structure, so there won't be paving or anything like that. Um, but that does include, you know, the rep rap and some of that gravel. But nothing more. Uh, we would have to do the aprons and tie it in, you know, to the existing asphalt. But that would be a cost that we would absorb a hundred percent.
And presently, it's, uh, wooden decking?
Um, that is something that the existing structure, they kind of had to do some temporary repairs, and so they had to add a layer of decking over the existing structure.
That was intended to be temporary?
Correct, yeah.
All right, thank you.
How long has this memorandum of understanding been waiting to be signed?
Well, the date on there is twenty, well, that, yeah, that is, uh, the actual date that was proposed.
So this would also need some updates in addition, or is this standing?
Nope, uh, we have, again, this is something that Monti prepared in 2020, volleyed back to the county, and there's really been no discussion. So I would guess that we have a lot of negotiation before we get it in place.
And this hasn't been approved by a prior City Commission?
City Commission or county.
Okay. Our move, we approve the cost sharing of the thirteen, twenty-seven, twenty-seven thousand, extend contingent upon us on MOU with the county.
I'll second that. So we have a motion from Commissioner Speka and a sentence from Commissioner Hewitt. And the motion is to approve the cost sharing at twenty-seven plus, and then also have the memorandum of understanding signed by county and city. Any discussion?
Need to be done prior to payment of the money.
Having the MOU?
Yeah, and you guys would get the MOU back once the negotiations have taken place.
Discussion?
So will the memorandum of understanding, that would have, uh, a suggested completion date? Things like that?
No, um, it would go over the list of bridges. There's, I don't know, probably eight to ten bridges located in the county that, or located in the city that the county is responsible for. Um, and just identifying them, probably just road width. Uh, we don't, they're annually inspected, uh, by the Department of Transportation. And so, um, you probably saw that in the MOU that it reflects those inspections. Um, but we just thought, just a summary of, you know, widths, things like that, locations, uh, structure numbers would be all that would be really included in this document itself. Um, I would envision that there'll be quite a few changes, um, because like I said, the county really has not modified that at all. It was just the city's first draft.
So the action we're taking tonight is only on that particular third avenue? So the action we're taking tonight is only on that particular Third Avenue Bridge?
Correct.
Okay. And the funding for that, our cost would probably come out of the gas tax money?
Um, it would come from street maintenance of some sort.
From what?
Street maintenance.
Street maintenance?
Would.
Okay.
Would this item be budgeted this fiscal year or next?
It would be in the next, but.
There is money for currently.
Okay.
But we will be, you know, we'll probably bring it up during the budget process that it is budgeted.
Included.
In the, in the next fiscal year.
Okay.
But there is, there are currently funds to cover this cost share. Okay.
Yeah. Questions, Commissioner Hewitt?
Do you have a reason why the county has drug their feet out of this? I mean, honest to God, Lena isn't there and neither is Sandy. And Carl isn't there.
I have no idea if they had heartache, if they, again, it was going into COVID and a lot of other things. So I'm not certain what the reason was.
First bridge, so it's time.
Well, and it's been, we've had several discussions about this first bridge. And so I think that just emphasizes the importance of having this agreement in place so that the, the expectations are already laid out.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public or the commission? Questions? Can, can we take a roll call vote?
Okay, so we are approving the cost share of 27,610 dollars contingent on getting a signed M O U in place with the county. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sika?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item two, discussion in action on approving the purchase of U V rack for the wastewater treatment plant. City Manager Holly Phelps.
Um, so included in your packet is the purchase requisition for a U V rack. Um, this is a proprietary, uh, piece of hardware, um, for our U V system. And so, uh, really there's only one qualified bidder for this. Uh, everybody else just refers back to Trojan. And so you can see the cost. Again, these products are impacted by tariffs. Um, but, uh, the cost is just under $18,000. Um, there is money in the budget for this, uh, repair to.
Does this, uh, item help us progress with our issues with D E Q at the wastewater treatment plant? Or is this just general maintenance of machinery?
Yep, this has nothing to do with any of that. Uh, it is just ordinary maintenance of the facility.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the public or the commission? Is there a motion?
I move that we, um, go forward with the purchase requisition of the drying rack? No, U V rack. U V racks, excuse me.
Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Hewitt and a second from Commissioner Bueller. Any other comment or discussion or questions for City Manager? This is pretty product specific, right?
Very.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay. The motion is to approve the purchase of U V rack from Trojan Technologies. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sika?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number three is discussion in action on approving a business license for True North Electrical. And again, that commission, um, approves business licenses for H VAC, electrical and plumbing. And I just wanted to ask before, City Manager reporting on this, is, I read in the minutes of last time that it was asked if we could move to no longer approve these or what, what's the status on that? I wasn't part of that discussion, so.
It would be an ordinance change, but I think that is the direction from the commission to, uh, do away with the antiquated system.
Okay. Awesome. Okay, City Manager Holly Phelps?
Um, so before you, you have an application, uh, from a local electrician. They are actually located just outside the city limit, uh, but often do work inside, uh, the city limit. And so, um, it is the season that we get a lot of, of contractors and different, uh, business licenses in. And so as, uh, Commissioner Day pointed out, uh, as it sits right now, plumbers, electricians and H VAC contractors need to come to you guys.
Any other questions, your comments from the public or the commission?
Again, all paperwork is in order to prove and all the appropriate insurance things are accounted for. Awesome. Do they have to reapply it right here for the license?
Do you have to repaint? We don't have to bring it to you. It's just a renewal.
Okay, so you know, they're in county, they haven't done this before, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve the business license application from True North Electrical.
Second, we have a motion from Commissioner Robertson and a second from Commissioner Hewitt. We'll take a roll call vote.
We need to discuss first.
Okay, we do, don't we? Do we have any other questions, your comments?
Um, Jeff Martinez, and now this, he's been here a while?
Yes.
Okay, and Marcela, now that's up by Kodiak Concrete?
Yep, he was just below the hill there.
Okay. And typically he does work outside the city, so he never needed a city permit before? Is that the idea?
He, um, was in business with his brother or son, son, and now he's out on his own. They're both going to be doing work, but different jobs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for City Manager or comments? Okay, let's take a roll call vote.
Uh, we have a motion to approve a business license for True North Electrical. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sika?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to citizen requests. Okay, Commissioner Minutes, we'll start with Commissioner Sika.
No Minutes today?
Commissioner Hewitt?
I have a minute. Um, I would like to first note that an email that we all received as commissioners is what I'm going to address. This is a topic that is sensitive, I understand. Also, it is something that multiple people have, uh, contacted me about. And so I have a prepared statement. As I've prepared. First, I acknowledge that each person has the First Amendment right to free speech in our country. That is very important. I also acknowledge that the city of Louisvillestown does not have a policy addressing employees' decorum on social media. We should remedy that.
We do have a problem.
Spectacular. Lastly, I acknowledge that the City Manager oversees personnel issue and not the City Commission. With all of that said, I would like to take a moment to address the recent social media post by our police chief. As a public employee who is charged with protecting all Louisvillestown citizens and enacting unbiased enforcement of the law, I am dismayed by the violent threats he recently made toward the section of the population. It calls into question his ability to provide the unbiased law enforcement that his position of authority requires. Additionally, this social media post challenges what is acceptable as the professional decorum of our government and by default, the leadership of this government. Therefore, I ask these questions of our City Manager. What is your response to these publicly stated threats? And more importantly, as the leader of all city department heads, how are you going to regain the respect and the trust of all the citizens that you serve?
Uh, so I did obviously get the original email, um, but did get a formal complaint that was kept it turned over to H R and, uh, they're working with the attorney on that investigation process. And so again, there's a process to investigate if, A, any policies or there's any violations of law and then, uh, move forward with, um, with or not. It's not any discipline or things like that. But again, uh, there are certain levels of, uh, privacy that needs to be expected.
Understandable.
Tyler, did you want to sign in with anything?
Uh, no, this, uh, it's been brought to everyone's attention. Uh, my elephant's in the room, it's going to be addressed and addressed appropriately.
Thank you. That's my minute.
And your second question, did you feel like that would?
I, I do think that outwardly communicating this to the public, that you are addressing it in whatever way is lawful and correct and prudent by our government is something that I think would be very beneficial and would help, uh, engender great trust in what we are doing here.
And so I have been communicating with the individuals that did, uh, make the form.
Okay. If you could not share with the commissioners, the individual topics that are discussed, but kind of the process again and again, so that when, uh, citizens come to us, we can then represent you guys to our best effort.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yes?
I just wanted to make two questions regarding that, um, particular topic as well. So when you mentioned that information was transferred to Human Resources, does that include Post as well?
Uh, we do not.
You do not?
Yes.
So it would take a public complaint that would have to go into Post?
Uh, Post would, uh, investigate any complaints that, they have their own process.
Okay. And, um, I just wanted to ask.
Yeah.
How are, recently we made a statement as a commission, um, letter put forth, how does that affect a situation like this? Does it or does it not? Cause.
I don't know.
Huge, yeah.
When, um, remember back when we had with the American Flaring, the commission did a statement that they released with, with that. It seemed like that statement that was made addresses this type of issue as well. Is that just something that was public that we made public or is there emails that we as a commission need to do to?
I think, I mean, it would be up to you guys. If you feel strongly, uh, it may be nice to make a statement like that this time as well. Again, he has a pretty good framework in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding, yes, for the City Manager or attorney or city attorney? Okay, alright, we can resume with Commissioner Minutes with Rob, Commissioner Robertson.
Um, I'm gonna hold off since the process is in place. Stay silent on that topic. Uh, not, not, that I was a poor one to say. Um, I think it's just appropriate that we let the process carry forward. Um, only that I would be, uh, I'll be absent the May 5th meeting, the next meeting.
And Commissioner Rubes?
Well, it's that time of the year. We can see our sidewalks really well and there's many of them in the city that need repair. And I would suggest, starting with the one down Kiwanis Park, cause that's the city sidewalk that used to be a sidewalk. It's rubble now. But in order to encourage other citizens to repair their sidewalk, I think we need to start with ours. And secondly, I know there's a program out there to help citizens with removal of the concrete. And I think it'd be good to have that, um, um, in the news, the radio, the newspaper, uh, informing them again, reminding them. And also maybe even the city ordinance, uh, in regard to sidewalks. And maybe, um, at our next meeting, we could spend 10 minutes on some of that stuff?
Yes, we're working on, uh, some tweaks and edits to the tree policies. Um, but sidewalks is one that has, uh, over the years been very well used too. So we can definitely bring that back. And then, uh, Commissioner Day and I will also relate to the park and recs board, um, your comments about Kiwanis Park. And, uh, we can maybe make that a priority going into the next weather year.
Sidewalks and Kiwanis is.
Thank you.
And that surface that he's referred, that Commissioner Rubes is referring to for concrete, there's also one available assistance for tree removals to.
Correct.
Any other comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hewitt?
Has, has anything been done on park and rec as far as the basketball courts? Have any nets or anything been put up or?
They have done some work last year. Um, but we can follow up with Kelly and find out specifically how much of the work got done. I know some of them needed only rims and things like that.
Kiwanis, Kiwanis is one of them.
Yeah, that's the one I'm thinking of that needed replacement, not just the new.
Sounds like that would be an easy project. Do you think it's a good organization to, I'm glad you.
I'm glad you put that back on our regard. Yeah, it is, yeah. It needs to.
So focused with floors and cleaners.
Yeah, the kids, the kids do.
Vacs.
Yeah, all my, my kids even, even when, I mean, there weren't any nets or anything when, I mean, and they're in their 50s now. So it's like.
I remember the chains up there for a while.
Yeah.
And I don't think there was any net in my whole life.
Right, right.
Thank you. Is that all? That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Awesome. Okay, and then I just wanted to reiterate of earlier, Commissioner Robertson, you said May 22nd at what time for the snow?
10:00 AM. 10:00 AM at the city office.
City office.
City office?
City office.
And then, um, as I already mentioned, streets getting cleaned on Thursday morning. So feel free to come on downtown to Thursday night.
Bring it down.
Bring it down. It's a party. So, awesome. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, our meeting is adjourned.